Alright, I'll call this meeting a Lake County E nine one one authority to order. March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four at thirteen oh four. Uh, does anyone have any changes to the agenda? I'll entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Someone has to second it.
I'll second.
Oh. Sorry, I got caught up on one of the.
Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Alright, the agenda is approved. You got all that? Indeed. Alright, move on to director's reports. Um, I don't have any, so I'll kick it over to you. I don't have any either.
Um, sorry, I do.
Good.
Surprise. Um, not too much to talk about, a little bit in the budget update, but kind of looking outside the budget. Um, the South Central region did um just finish the uh tactical interoperable communication tick plan. Um, all the updates to that, so that is in the packet for you guys' review, just looking at um radio channels kind of region wide. Um, and different MAC groups we have available to us throughout the region. Um, so a good review if you haven't read it. Um, there's also updated two oh fives for every um area throughout the region, different departments in there as well, so for mutual aid, um, large scale incidents, things like that, those are all pre-planned out in there, so nice little resource there. Um, it looks like we had some of the first part of our Motorola equipment arrive um the other day. I don't know what's in the box, but there is a box for Motorola, so.
There's two boxes, Tom still hasn't come through.
No.
But they look the same.
Huh. Um, but some Motorola equipment did arrive, um, and then Lain's reached out to start a kickoff project for that, so it looks like they'll be rocking and moving a little bit on that. Um, I think Chelsea and I are just kind of talking with Lain on what it looks like as we make the radio tower update. Um, and the last thing is the, our agreement with Ken Foulman is finalized, so he's officially booked with us. Um, that agreement's been recorded, it was sent with him, sent to him, he just responded to me about a half hour ago. Um, he would like to schedule just kind of a kickoff meeting with the board soon and. So we'll work on getting him on the agenda.
Awesome. Question about the, I was talking to Michael about the, is it already on your agenda already? About the tower? Yeah, yeah, okay.
Oh, and sorry, I did have one other thing. Um, I was able to go talk with our dispatchers last night at their meeting, so thank you to Paula and Chelsea for that time. We just talked a little bit about emergency management overall and how we can partner together, and it was a good conversation, so thanks for putting me on your guys' agenda. I hope it was useful.
I think it was everybody's like, who's quite a work in our.
Yeah.
Alright, how you doing? Anything else Claire?
Nope, that's it.
Alright, we'll move on to public comment, um, so if anybody has a comment. Tim, you can't leave. Uh, comments limited to. Yeah, absolutely, comments are limited to three minutes.
I don't have a comment, it's just a question.
Okay.
Can anybody tell me about this build thing that's going on that?
The lead mill?
Be reactivated or something like that? Rebuild, reused, repurposed?
No, sir, so we're the E nine one one board?
What?
We're the E nine one one board?
So is it an emergency?
Not, not particularly.
It's okay, but I'm serious.
It's, it's not, it's, that's not within our purview, that's a, that's a county issue, so we don't have anything to do with the lead mill.
Okay.
I would go down.
So a different question.
Yeah.
Who would be the right person to talk to about that?
Yeah, I would go downstairs to community planning and development. Um, if you go down this hallway, take the stairs at the end and then kind of wrap back around.
Or in the back?
Yeah. Yep.
And you can also make.
Planning?
Yeah.
Community planning and development.
But you don't mind if I sit in and listen to you?
No, not at all.
You want to walk in?
You can also attend uh council meetings and make public comment there, or the Board of County Commissioners meetings and make public comment there about the mill. So those are other options.
When do I meet you guys?
They're all, they're all scheduled online, um, so if you look on their websites, you can see uh what times and dates they have scheduled for those meetings.
So where do I, where, this Lakeville Council?
Yeah, City, the uh City of Leadville's uh website has that information and then Lake County's also.
I'll find you, thanks.
Yeah. Tim, any uh public comment?
No.
Then nobody's online, right?
No.
Is this gonna be the fastest meeting on record?
Yeah, well, we'll see. I think uh, we already had a pretty quick one, didn't we?
We did.
Alright, we'll move on to new business, so the first item, item A is gonna be our staffing update, discussion on staffing priorities.
Do you want those doors still open?
Yes, please. Yeah, let me keep it open.
They may not move up a little.
Okay, yeah.
My stuff right here?
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, so Chelsea Parsons, our interim executive director, is gonna go and kick us off with that conversation.
Um, so I'm interim director, um, Chelsea Parsons, we have new supervisor officially this week, Paula Blasco. She's the E nine one supervisor, and we have um, four full-time dispatchers and one dispatcher in training, and we have one position open.
Cool. Welcome Paula.
Uh, we did have one apply that made it through most of the current process, but not all the way, so that position's still open.
Do you have other candidates?
Um, we have a few, we're, we're waiting for response from three.
So what's the biggest stumbling block to fill that position?
To fill the.
Sir, we just keep the, we have to keep the public comment to three minutes, and then this is just a discussion for you to enjoy the entertainment of.
Okay. I'm always, I'm an active listener.
Sure. Afterwards, if uh, if you just wanted to pick one of our friends, we'd be happy to talk to you some more.
Thanks.
Congratulations Paula. Paula, you wanna tell us a little bit about yourself and um what your hopes are as a supervisor and just kind of update the whole board? I know I got, I had the privilege to get to know you fairly well, but I know not everybody has, so, yeah.
I will be with the sheriff's department for fifteen years now in August. Um, I kinda have different departments, but I have my admin office, but I've covered in dispatch shifts and stuff like that, cross-trained. Pretty much in all departments besides patrol. Um, so I've done those things for the years I've been here. Um, as supervisor, I am hoping to get dispatchers or staff trained to, how should I say? Like, we're small, but yet at a level as to, hey, just be prepared for different things that come up that we don't usually see, but we're seeing more of. And um, working with all the departments and, you know, how we can improve and communicate and have dispatch and the comm center, you know, move towards that entity. Being under the E nine one one board and not under the sheriff's office and make that transition good for the sheriff's office and also for the comm center, you know, and get there. Might take me a while, but I think it's possible and I'm excited to see that that's a new thing in Lake County and, you know, I think we're all doing different things, even with the fire station down south and, you know, we're doing great things, big things, you know, and I'm excited. I'm like, let's go.
Yeah, a lot of positive change. So, you know, we have also built in a multi-year build plan for the dispatch center to have achievable goals that allows enough growth opportunity for individuals. And um, so that's gonna take some time um to get to what we're gonna call minimum staffing, which is eight dispatchers, two supervisors and an interim director. And that will allow us to have um abilities to have emergency medical dispatching and the other one is with fire, uh, two, emergency fire dispatching. So certain qualifications that we have to meet that um, that aren't just training-based, it's also personnel-based, and that's what we're working towards getting to. Um, so with that said, it's also a balance of who's working where and when. And right now, we're all pretty used to wearing a lot of hats, and um, that's not the ideal situation, because it just kind of waters down the product uh, and the person's ability to do all jobs, so um, Chelsea, Chelsea thankfully has been wearing multiple hats. Uh, she's worked as a dispatcher, worked as a supervisor, and now as the interim director and hasn't had time to dedicate or the ability, because you're one person to do one individual job solely. Um, so from the priority standpoint, we're going to um post the executive director position. Um, we have uh the budgeted for eight positions this year, and so we're at seven, as you mentioned. And so it's time that we um try to find the person, whoever it may be, to um work in that role for this year. Um, so that position, I'm gonna ask the board to do is review the um, the job posting, which has which has gone through some review already, and uh, we don't have to do that right now, but please get back to us if you have any feedback or if we're missing anything. And then we can get that, that posted and try to fill that position. It's a priority because we need somebody who's dedicated to lead the dispatch center. And not have it as an additional hat. So, thank you. We won't go looking for you now. Um, and, and so it's just the, it's the timing is right now um to make that move, so we hope to fill that position. Um, but we also won't rush the process and, and we'll make sure that we get the, make the right decision, so. Uh, any other thoughts on staffing a priority?
As far as the executive director, I mean, they talked about this in the budget, is that gonna be the end of the county or is that gonna be the rest?
The position, the, so all um dispatch employees are county employees as part of the IGA.
Correct, as far as.
Yeah, so they'll still be a county employee. And we do, with kind of the time of year that we're hiring, with some cost savings in other areas, we should be able to look toward this cost, based on the rough numbers I have. Yeah. Um, but the job description is in your packet, it doesn't look very dissimilar from what um we reviewed a few months ago, um, but I would encourage you all you know, maybe by the end of this week, by the end of next week, uh, to take a look at it, see if there's anything missing um or that can be changed. Um, it's pretty hefty, as you can see, so please take a look at it um and leave your thoughts.
So just to clarify, there's been changes to it since this first time that it's came out?
I, I think I took off, so the one thing I did put in there last night is that I did leave a question. Um, I guess the, oh yeah, I left one comment, I think it's worth a discussion if we want to change it, leave it as an executive director or change it to a director. Um, since this is a county employee, um, on paper, you know, our leadership is kind of the director, not as much executive director. So that was kind of one thing I threw out there, and then there, I think there was one bullet on there in like kind of the duties that doesn't apply to us as a jurisdiction. Um, the template for this came from Jeffco, um, so just kind of switching that, so one bullet came off. Um, other than that, it hasn't been changed too much, I believe.
I don't particularly care about the name, I wouldn't change that to be in line with county structure that's there.
I agree. Sounds good, any other thoughts? Alright, we'll move on to next item in our new business, item B, E nine one one authority budget update, uh, led by our treasurer.
Um, so I don't have too much of an update. Um, as I mentioned, the numbers are looking really good, just in being able to hire that executive director. Um, you do have some reports in your packet from the treasurer's office, kind of showing the um latest incomes and expenditures. All of the IGA payments are in, so thank you all for helping get that through your finance departments, but all of those came in. Um, they, the reports are in a different format, so it's not the Excel spreadsheet, Excel spreadsheet that many of you are used to. Um, so it does look a little bit different, I'm sorting through it myself, I have some questions for, for the treasurer's office, um, but that report is in your packet. Um, and other than that, Chelsea, unless you have anything to add, I haven't seen any major budget shifts that go through.
Not shifts, just regular bills, um, we're paying the NG nine one century link bills, um, you pay that energy bill on this one. And just regular bills, nothing's changed really. Yeah.
The bills don't change, like, they're just.
Forgive my ignorance on this, because I have not had a chance to look at those. Is there a overall expenditure of the year versus um budgetary that, that uh is shown?
Um. No, this is just showing um more of the income, um, so it's kind of breaking it down what that spreadsheet was. Um, we do have the county system in code, that's more of our budget tracker. Um, so we're kind of working through that, it's been kind of a shift with the finance office, um, to kind of combine the two budgets, if that makes sense. So we're still kind of getting that system set up to reflect accurately.
Okay, so we'll be able to compare actuals yet? Okay.
Yeah.
Claire, have you had time to dive into this at all, to see how the um, the changes are with the letters you sent out, if we're getting a pretty good response yet? Looking, looking pretty good so far?
Yeah, I haven't been able to take a look at the checks. Um, I've been waiting for my personal bill to come through to check that, so I would encourage everyone to check their own phone bills. Um, but no, I have not, sorry.
No, it's okay. Um, alright, thanks Claire, any other thoughts on the uh, on the budget update or any other input?
Sorry, I just have questions that relate to budget and the tower update, I don't know if you want to wait for the tower update?
Uh, yeah, do you, if you think it's more appropriate for budget update, go for it.
Uh, so as far as I understood with the last tower's update is that we need to get those fiber lines in to get to the tower, and we need the tower to be able to get the M two C seventy five hundred consoles in. So I guess I'm just a little bit confused, and that's why I was asking if I need the tower update, because I I didn't know how to respond to Lain email, because I thought we were still waiting on stuff for the towers.
Okay. Yeah, well, uh, I'll kick that to the next uh new business item. But I, yeah, there's some budget questions in there too, but I think it's more specific to the towers and.
Um, I, um, on the topic of the budget, I also got three quotes for monitors, because ours had been going out. Um, and obviously the tower was a little bit more important on the last two meetings, um, but I, those, I wanted to talk about those, because the quotes have expired now.
Okay.
But we do need monitors.
How many?
Um, so the options are two large ones or six small ones.
Okay. What's the price difference?
So for the two large ones, they're fifteen hundred each, so it's three thousand, and then for the smaller ones, let me just make sure.
Is that six total or six per station?
Let me do that, so I can do the right thing.
With small ones? Okay, that's okay.
Six total for a thousand two hundred and sixty five.
Is the total for?
For the small ones.
And that's three per station, is what you're saying?
Yes.
That's a reduction of what we have now, right?
No, because the other one is a radio.
Okay.
And then the, there's a TV and there's a radio one, so.
And those monitors are okay?
As far as I know.
Yeah, they're not starting to fail.
But the radio computers are probably gonna be replaced with the Motorola system.
Yeah, right. Okay. Um, have you had time to look into the budget to see if, uh, I know that was in a specific item that we budgeted for?
Um, we have the dispatch repairs and maintenance.
Yeah, if that would fit into.
Yeah. It really depends on if we go with the bigger ones for three thousand, that was a bigger budget item. Um, if I go with the smaller ones, um, that's within the budget.
Okay. And the other one's not?
No, it's, um, so like, we're budgeted for fifteen hundred, and then I have to ask permission from the board for more than that. Um, uh, that will go up to three thousand for some bigger monitors.
Isn't that just repair maintenance, a hundred forty K?
Yeah, I thought there was a, is that on the, uh, I think in the packet? I thought there was a significant amount on there, from what I remember.
Let me understand, was the purpose was expecting that stuff was gonna go down, because those are.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Well, I guess I was also referring to the county financial policy as well. I just wanted to make sure I was following both.
No, sure, it's.
Yeah. So thirty.
Let me, this may be an important question that I'd need to learn about, is what, what would best suit dispatch? Would it be the little monitors or would it be the bigger monitors, uh, that would better, would it be better for operations? Right, what do the dispatchers want?
The dispatchers want the bigger ones, um, so that way if we don't, are constantly moving our ma, our masks and it's easier just to look at one screen instead of have to find the stuff on different screens.
Do you feel like the extra cost is warranted for benefit?
I do, and especially because we just visited some accounting and they have the bigger screens, they just switched to the bigger screens and they like that much better as well.
Sure, okay, that's good. Yeah, I'm glad you found that direct feedback from that user.
I didn't know that they did that, but I got it to her and I'm like, are you wanting to use big screen? Yeah, I guess we will. So what was the quote on the big screens? The quote is fifteen hundred each, so two screens for each dispatch, it's for a total of three thousand. But I will have to get another one, because um it's.
Who would set those up for us? Who would set, who would set us up?
That's Iron Edge.
Okay, that was quote from them? Does that include their labor too?
Um, no, but I, um, when I emailed them, they said that it's included, the lake was included in their contract.
Okay.
When I got a quote from Communication Solutions, they included their labor. And that's why I decided to go with Iron Edge. I have both quotes in my director's report, but that's why I decided to go with Iron Edge, because they were a little bit cheaper.
Okay. Do you expect a big change in price on any quote?
I don't know, I think they just have to have a timeline on their quotes, because of um, the economy and things change a lot, but I, I'm personally not expecting a big difference, especially because they just expired last week.
Does the board feel like we need that quote to move forward with it? You guys want that? I don't think so, no. Yeah, I don't either, so it's not gonna be significant. That's I, I would assume. And if, and if it is, I'm sure you'd let us know.
Yeah.
And Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but this would be a budgeted expense under regular budget line items and doesn't require any special approval, would we consider it?
Okay.
Yeah, just because it's fading basically after repair.
Yeah, so stuff like that, Chelsea, if it, you know, if you decide that we need budgetary, you know, board approval, because it's a non-budgeted item or something way, it's, you know, fine, but if it's something within your verbiage, that means go for it, do it with the street dispatchers.
Okay. Yeah, fine, the county finance policy said over fifteen hundred, so I just wanted to make sure.
For non-budgeted.
Non-budgeted, okay.
Yeah, so this is budgeted for it.
Got it.
And if, and it makes you feel better, send an email to the, you know, to the five of us and be like, hey, you guys feel okay with this? We can answer that way and you can make your purchases. I don't want you to have to wait a month to make a purchase that you can do anyways, right? And so if you need it for your department, that's where you, you know, you get the budget for it, that means go for it.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Alright, did you have something else you wanted to mention for budget?
Oh, just kind of, kind of what Dan was saying, um, is in the treasurer's office, there's a, let's forget this, a financials line?
For the income, yeah.
Yeah, okay. If they can, maybe also for them to start doing like a budget versus actual for us kind of thing, and then we can have to do monthly financials.
That would be more. Yeah.
Because really, we should be approving this monthly financials, like looking at that and then approving it out of the board, and then that's in the minutes, which shows that we're seeing the financials, including that every single month.
Quarterly? Would that be alright with everybody? Just a quarterly report on that, not a, not a, because we're gonna meet every month, right? We don't need to do that every month? Or do we want to see it every month?
It depends, I mean, yeah, it's just much of what we want to do, but most of the other boards I sit on, either it's bi-monthly or monthly. Or we could do quasi, if you want to.
I mean, we meet bi-monthly, I think bi-monthly, I think.
Yeah, sure, that's fine, alright, yeah. But yeah, every time we meet, we should be approving the previous financials for that, I think, for the next month or whatever it is.
I don't know if it helps, but I was, I'm tracking the budget, um, basically every time I get a bill, um, looking how much is taken out and how much we have left.
Yeah, perfect, so we'll start requesting that.
Um, but I am um getting little bit pieces from the E T C from you and then from Deidre and then s, different numbers from Stephanie, so I don't know if we need to make a meeting or something, so that we're all getting all the information?
Yeah.
So it's not just picking pieces.
You getting revenue information from Stephanie also?
Um, well, I'm going to the CLT meetings now and her numbers are different than my numbers, so I was just wondering. I've been wondering why and I wanted to know why.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, go ahead and run with that question with her.
Yeah.
Alright, any other thoughts, discussion, budget update? Alright, move on to our last uh new business, uh, item C is Leadville Radio Tower update. Claire, if you can kick that conversation off, would be great.
Yeah, actually, I'm gonna pass it over to Chief Daly, did you say, did you say you talked with Michael?
I did.
Yeah.
He said that he has not been able to get that number yet. And the reason why, I'm trying to remember our conversation.
Which number?
Uh, the number that we need.
A R S.
Oh, okay.
A R S, the entire registration number, or whatever, A S R, A S R, I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, it would probably be better to maybe ask Michael this.
Okay.
So I mess up the conversation, yeah, and, and I'm accurate, I don't want to be inaccurate here, so. So maybe we'll just reach out to Michael on that. He's saying that he's had some kind of issue with getting the, the number and it has to do with the, something else. And I can't remember exactly what that simple thing is, it's not my world, I don't let him ring your towers. I'm calling.
I was gonna say, do you want to either call him or invite him to the next meeting, but.
You want to call him and see if he answers?
Sure.
So that's the last piece of the puzzle, right?
Well, then, then we can order a microwave dish, but that's in the sixty six minutes to make it.
Yeah.
And that's if we, the state can be back waiting for it and the generator.
Did she have Pam's back? I'm just curious.
Pam? I think that she did. Hey, Michael. Hey, no problem, man. It's uh, yeah, great, you like to do it. Hey, I'm sitting here with the E nine one one board, can you tell me, can you tell them, I'll put you on speakerphone, can you tell them kind of what you told me about the number and the difficulties and what you're having, et cetera, so that we can kind of figure out what the next steps are? Hold on, I'll put it on the speakerphone just a second. Yeah?
So I have not gotten the approval to refile the number yet. The paperwork I have not received. So I'm going to reach out to the consultants again and see why we haven't, when the last time we talked to them, they were supposed to get us the information pretty quick. And until I get that approval, I can't refile the A S R number.
Who, who is, who are we waiting for, that approval?
The consultant that we hired to um file that paperwork with the FCC.
Okay.
They have to write a report on it and get it sent back to me, so I have all the information to give to the FCC when we refile.
Okay, so we're waiting for that consultant to give you that information, so then, then it's back in our hands to refile with the FCC?
Yes, which doesn't take very long, because I did it like in a half hour the last time.
Oh, really? And then what's the turnaround on getting that approval from the FCC, do you know?
The thirty day waiting period, because they have to put it out for public comment.
Okay.
And then as soon as that public comment is over, they'll, they should release the number.
Okay. Um, the consultant you're talking about, is uh, is that our only option to get that approval to refile, or do we have other options?
Yeah, I just gotta get that report from them, that um, they're putting together for the one oh six stuff, the hi, history stuff and um tribal land stuff.
And you're able to try to contact them again to s, get an update for us?
Yeah, I will. I'll, I'll send them an email right now.
Yeah, that, that'd be awesome. Michael, uh, we're, we're starting to receive some of the Motorola equipment.
Okay.
And we, you know, as you know, we can't do anything with it until all that's in order, so.
Right.
The ball's rolling on the other side, so we're just looking for an update.
Yep, I will get on them to give me an update and I'll let you know as soon as I got one.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
I see.
Thanks, Michael, appreciate you, man.
Yeah.
See, I would've messed that up. No, that, okay, I'm tracking. So if you talk to them about it again, if there's anything that we can do to support, let them know. Yeah. Okay. Uh, what we can do or can't do, but if there's anything we can do.
Um, regarding Pam's email, so she did get back, um, basically after our work session, we. We asked her about like possibly reordering the equipment, if there are other funding pathways available. She wrote back and said that, you know, we've already done all of this once, um, we will not reinvest until we can show that the site is ready and a hundred percent complete. In addition to that, like, we also talked about installation and ma, I'm sorry, not installation. Maintenance needs, as long as the state purchases and installs the equipment, they will provide for the maintenance, repair and replacement. We are looking at about a six month backlog in the supply chain for new equipment, um, but they won't do anything until, um, we're all done there. So that's basically the same answer that we got from Brian in the work session, that until that tower is done, um, the state doesn't wanna pursue any funding pathways or anything. And you guys should all have that email in your inboxes as well.
Yeah, I just found it, yeah. Worst case scenario, what was the number? Do we know then what the number would be if we were to have to fund that ourselves? Do we know that number? Probably not.
I don't think we do, and I, you know, from talking with Brian, it's not anything we could, we could try to pursue, pursue ourselves.
Yeah, so we, we need to send some cupcakes or something to somebody.
F C C, yeah. So yeah, so the other part of this update I had, um, is that I attended the C C N C meeting a few weeks ago. They did not discuss our project at that meeting, um, but they did discuss our project during the seven hundred, eight hundred committee meeting. And while I was not on that meeting, I heard that we were brought up and I reached out to Brian, uh, Brian Foltz, many of you remember from our work session. Um, and I did find out, and I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher kind of the technical terms about this a little bit. So our tower will not be an eight hundred tower due to licensing requirements. It will be a seven hundred tower, however, um, and Chelsea, I think you were on this email as well. As long as our equipment is designed for dual seven hundred, eight hundred operations, um, we should not notice a difference. So I'm still trying to figure out what this means.
Oh, yeah.
But I wanted to provide that update, um, but the state has assured me that even though it'll be a seven hundred tower, we shouldn't notice any operational differences. It's solely due to licensing across the state. On the, on the other side of that, um, Brian Foltz will be leaving the state, um, he got a remote job where he can go work on a ranch in Montana and not see anybody for months at a time. He's very excited, he asked me to pass along his well wishes, he enjoyed working with us. And we will be working with, um, Rich Mom who is also at the work session as well moving forward, that'll be our contact. But yeah, so I'm sorry, I don't have more information on that, I'm still trying to figure out what it means, um, but just know that our tower was changed to a seven hundred tower, um, due to state licensing requirements. But your users shouldn't notice a difference.
Okay. But you said as long as our equipment can handle, so I'm just guessing it can at this point, cuz I've never heard of seven hundred.
I have, I'm not either, and, you know, since the beginning of time when the state implemented this system, it has always been the eight hundred system, eight hundred D T R system, so. Correct, um, I believe at least the portable radios that we purchased and, uh. X P S's or the, whatever we have in the bubbles in the vehicles, I think they are seven hundred A and are capable. Although we should probably get, because they're not for us.
Communication Solutions would probably know.
I've never seen a lot of stuff, um, seven hundred plus eight hundred for all the equipment that we bought. But, uh, let's just check in and make sure that there's nothing we have that won't work. You're okay with taking that on, Paul?
Sure.
Thank you, Allison. Paul, I'll put or do that email right now, too.
Alright, any other comments or discussion on the, uh, the tower update? Claire, thanks for getting all that information, Dan, thanks for connecting us. Michael, not a lot of progress it sounds like with the consultant, um, so hopefully we hear something back soon. Getting that set up. Alright, well, we'll, uh, move on to, uh, approving our minutes from last meeting.
I turned it over, I didn't have my changes.
Okay, yeah, I looked over to. Dan, anything?
I don't.
Jeremiah?
Yes, sir.
Good to go. Alright, all entertainer motions approved, uh, last meeting's minutes.
One second.
Any further discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, meeting minutes are approved from last meeting of February first, twenty twenty four. Claire, do we wanna go over the E nine one one fund balance again? What was that brought up in that first slide?
Yeah, all I have right now, sorry, is just that, um. Is this, um, so I'm sorry, it's just a different format that I'm used to, so I'm still kind of going through it. So I don't know if we necessarily need to approve anything right now, I think we can move that to the next meeting and we'll have a better invoices out report.
Okay, yeah, that works for me, uh, but like you said, all the, uh, the payments from each entity has arrived into the fund now.
Yes.
So we checked that off. And we're starting to receive, uh, from the different companies that you sent the letter out, um, their payments also.
Yeah, I just need to see if I can get ahold of the checks that have come into the treasurer's office and try to start parsing them out a little bit, but.
Alright, sounds good, you guys have any questions on that one? I have nothing else, uh, to, to go over, once you guys do? We can go ahead and adjourn this meeting at, uh, thirteen forty. Not a record, but pretty close.
I guess it was record for me.
Exactly, when's our next date? Do we have one?
Uh, we don't.
Should we set that?
When I said that?
Yeah. Instead of doing the email. Back and forth.
Yeah, we have everybody here.
So it would be May, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Claire, you said you're out the week for thirteenth?
Yeah, I'm out the week of one, I will do.
I'm out after the twenty fourth.
Well, I'm out, sorry, so I'm out the seventeenth, so I can do that week.
Sorry, I have a question, um, for the E T Cs, did you ask for two oh four or do we go with one eighty eight?
Or is that, we went to two oh four.
Okay, and the one eighty eight was just an estimate based on how many people were responding?
Yeah, so the one eighty eight was an estimate, um, due to the fact that we didn't start the, the E T C, the two oh four E T C didn't kick in until February first. Um, and then we've also historically seen non-compliance issues of people paying the right amount, so we wanted to be able to plan for, um, having backtrack to people that aren't remitting at the correct amount. Through that process.
And these ones, does it look like people are remitting more enough? Like, more companies are remitting and are they remitting at the right price?
Well, I think like companies have always been remitting, um, it's just figuring out if it's at the right price or not. But without kind of seeing the actual check or any invoices that they sent over, like twelve, so they're paid, you know, Hughes for example, twelve sixty seven. Um, and then they have a admin fee that comes out, so. I'm trying to do that now. So, I mean, that comes out like, if you divide, I don't know, so, but if you do. Twelve sixty seven plus twenty five divided by two oh five, is that the amount?
To see how many.
To see how many ribbons has you got.
Right.
So that would come out to like roughly six or seven ribbons, since? Assuming they're paying the right amount, so that's what, that's what I need to dig into, um, see if we can get the checks and everything, so.
Um, I was, I can get the check from two oh five, if you want me to, I can just ask Deidre for me to do it. Um, cuz I was, I scanned it, the ones I got to you.
Oh, right, the two.
To go over the checks.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, one's good for everybody.
I'm pretty free the fifteenth.
Good tea, I think it's fifteenth. One, two, thirteen.
Wait, April, May.
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 I am at one.
It's fine.
We won't be able to be in here, but I can do one.
The fifteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good too.
Touching them on?
Cool. Uh, Chief Daly, could you look in the city halls a little bit for that?
Yeah. Cool, thanks guys, sweet.
Yeah.